The January 4th, 2023 Special Session of the Clarksville City Council is now called to Order. Ladies and gentlemen, the posting of the colors will be done by the Clarksville Fire Rescue Honor Guard, followed by our Chaplain of the Day, Pastor Catherine Mind Walker of New Jerusalem Five Four Ministries. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Mayor Pro Tem, Wanda Smith, followed by the National Anthem sung by Avon Bracy. I'll invite you to please stand and remain standing through the National Anthem.
Mayor Pitts right now. And God, right now, we just thank you that you say in your word when the righteous rule, the people rejoice. And God, we rebuke anything that's not like you, God. We just call for everything to fall in order right now in Clarksville, Tennessee, in every aspect, God. We decree to heavenly realms that no weapon formed against Mayor Pitts shall prosper. Every tongue that rise against him in judgment, God shall condemn. So God, right now, we just say thank you, God. We pray your protection over this city. We pray your protection over his family right now, in the name of Jesus, God. And God, we give you honor, we give you glory, and we give you praise. And God, we bless your name with the highest praise, and that is hallelujah, God. We just say thank you right now for what you're getting ready to do on behalf of Clarksville, Tennessee. Thank you for your man serving right now, Mayor Joe Pitts, in the name of Jesus. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose brush rides and bright stars Through the peril thus by, or the red hearts we watch, were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the moose-bursting air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
You may be seated. I don't know how, but you may be seated. Next on our agenda, I want to invite the Honorable Judge Charles Smith to please come forward with the First Lady, Minister of the Office. Get over to the important part, the attendance. Madam Court, please step in. Thank you. Now we can introduce to the office. Judge Smith.
Mayor, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Pitts, solemnly swear.
Aye, Joe Pitts, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws of the United States.
And will obey all the laws of the United States.
And the State of Tennessee.
And the State of Tennessee.
And that I will, in all respects.
And that I will, in all respects.
Support and obey the Charter.
Support and obey the Charter.
And all ordinances and resolutions of the City of Clarksville.
And all ordinances and resolutions of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself in my official capacity as mayor.
And that I will demean myself in my official capacity as mayor.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard for the welfare of the city.
And with due regard to the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge Smith. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Got a few remarks I'd like to make before we square in the seven City Council members. I want to say thank you to Judge Smith for his more than twenty-two years of service, faithful service to our city as our City Judge. Your dogged pursuit of fairness and of justice as our City Judge is a record to be both envied and admired and respected. So thank you, Judge Smith. We've got a lot of special guests here today, and I will begin to introduce them all. I'd like to recognize some of our Ford Campbell leadership who are here. If you are here from Ford Campbell, please stand so we can recognize you and say thank you for your outstanding service in defense of our people. We have other elected officials here, like Senator Real Powers and other elected officials. If you are here, please invite you to stand so we can recognize you. Thank you, Senator Powers. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to our city employee family. Without a doubt, they are the best people anywhere, and they are what make our city the best in the country. As I begin my remarks this afternoon, I want to say this: I'm an imperfect man serving a perfect God. Part of my blessing, a big part of my blessing, is my wife Cynthia, who stands beside me, walks in front of me, and prays for me, and you, every single one of you. Thank you. We've got a lot of family here as well, children and grandchildren, mothers and other family members. We won't ask them to stand, but I do want to say thank you. They're over here. Thank you for your love and support. And if you could vote for us, thank you for your votes. We appreciate that. The 2022 election is over. Let the Church say amen. And the citizens of Clarksville have spoken loud and clear. They demand that we turn our attention back to running the business of this city. So the next four years brings great promise for our city and some noteworthy milestones for our community. Just next year, in 2024, the Customs House Museum will celebrate its fortieth anniversary. And we'll also commemorate the twenty-fifth, believe it or not, anniversary of the tornado that tore through our town in 1999 and has served as a crucible moment for our community. In 2025, the odometer of our city will turn two-hundred-and-forty years young, and we're just getting warmed up. And finally, in 2027, Austin P. will celebrate its one-hundredth anniversary as a state anniversary. We are so glad that they are in our community and doing what they do to educate our young people and our adults. While we eagerly look forward to reaching all of these milestones, let's not forget the past and fixate on it. Let's instead fixate and transfix on the present. While we have made great progress over the last four years, we've got a lot of work to do. Our prosperity and promise must extend to every zip code, every neighborhood, and every family. It'll require our best. It'll require our best effort and our best performance, and quite simply, it'll just require our best. As one of my favorite authors once said, "The past is never as bad as we remember, and the future is always brighter than we dare to imagine." So let us imagine a gleaming city on the hill, a city historians will write about when all of us are gone from this earth, a city where the young and old are cared for, a city where opportunity was available for everyone, a city that puts the greater good of all ahead of the self-interest of the few. That is Clarksville. That's my own town. Thank you for being here today. I noticed that Mayor Golden, Wes Golden Montgomery County Mayor, is here. Mayor Golden, thank you for your friendship and your support. Look forward to working with you over the next four years. May God bless you, and may God bless Clarksville, Tennessee. It is now my honor to administer the oath of office to seven City Council members who were elected or re-elected. And I'm going to invite Ward One, Councilmember Brian Zacharias, to come forward while we administer the oath of office. And you have family members, if you'd like, to bring them up. Are you ready to take your oath of office?
I am.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Zacharias.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As a City Council Member.
As a City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Pitts. Thank you to everybody here, attendants, for this very special occasion. My family who is quickly retreating to their seats. Thank you to my beautiful wife, Jennifer, who has been by my side for over eighteen years now. My children, Anthony is up in Michigan doing great things for a state he was raised to hate. My wife is an Ohio State fan. So, like I said, he's doing great things up there. My son is home from University of Tennessee. He's a freshman. My daughter's a senior at West Creek High School, ready to graduate this year and go off into the world and do great things. I also have to mention the other guy you saw up here, Master Sergeant retired Steve Hawes. There is not a single picture of me at a milestone in my life that he is not in the background of. He was my senior instructor at AIT when I was in the Army in 1999. He handed my sergeant's stripes, my staff sergeant's stripes. He was there when I took responsibility as a first sergeant, and he is here today. Some friendships are enduring like that, and I could not be more grateful for your friendship and the guys. Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And I will make my retreat. Thank you so much.
Let me invite Ward Two, City Councilmember Deanna McCallum, forward.
I, Deanna McCallum.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As City Council Member.
As City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I wasn't prepared for comments, and those of you that know, you know I am not usually shy about things. I want to thank my friends and family. My husband and I have been married for thirty years. We came here by way of military. And when you're a military family, you settle in the community, your family, or your friends that you make through those experiences. And so my family is here today to support me. I am very grateful to be back on the City Council. I'm grateful to the people who worked here for and trust in giving me another opportunity to serve them to the best of my ability. I look forward to picking up where I left off. I look forward to serving with a pretty much new City Council. I've served with Councilman Redd and Councilman Smith in the past. And I look forward to what we can accomplish together for our constituency in the next four years. And thank you very much.
Well, we know this microphone works, so I'm going to call up the next person to proceed the oath of office, and that would be Ward Five, Councilperson Amber Martine.
Are you ready to take your oath of office? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amber Martine.
I, Amber Martine.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As a City Council Member.
As a City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I was not in a way I was going to make any speech either, so... I want to start with thanking my husband. He's been with me all of this, all the way. And initially, when I was first appointed, I was actually pregnant with my daughter who lives up here just now, and he was great support, as well as my friends who also encouraged me to come up for that appointment at the time. I feel very humbled by the residents who voted for me, who saw the work that I had committed during that time and decided that they wanted to keep me. So thank you to those of you, and thank you, everybody, for being here today.
Let me invite Councilperson Wanda Smith to come up and take your oath of office.
Are you ready to take your oath of office? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Wanda Smith. Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As a City Council Member.
As a City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I was hoping I didn't have to sing, but I'm going to thank, first of all, Ellen El Young, the most kind of a lady, who always opened doors for me and allowed me to be what she wants me to be. I'm going to thank my supporters. I want to thank my friends and family who have supported me through this race. It was not easy, but it was worthwhile. And I'm so glad that y'all saw Pitt to bring you back to serve one more time. This is my last term, and I will do my best to support each and every one of you who called me, because I do answer to my own calls, texts, text messages, emails, I do answer. And I will do my best to serve you. Thank you, and may God bless you.
Next, we have Ward Seven, City Councilmember Travis Holloman.
Are you ready to take your oath of office?
Yes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Travis Holloman. Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all of the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As a City Council Member.
As a City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Whew. Well, this reelection go-around was... It did some energy, and I'd just like to thank Jimmy Parker, his girlfriend Ronnie, mom and dad, Jimmy Dan Holloman, Mark Holloman, and Rod Holloman. Just the whole Holloman family, Pat Howard, Dino Groves. I couldn't have done it without them. And, you know, it's just, every time you... I don't know, it's just when you fall in love with the board all over again. You get to meet the residents, you get to feel the layout's changed, what hasn't, and you just fall in love with the board all over again. I mean, we're in Ward Seven right now, and, you know, it's one of the... Sorry, I'm going on top. I got tickets off my chest. I've got to thank God, and I've always struggled with my spiritual journey, and I couldn't have won this without Jesus Christ. I just wanted to share that. It's going to be a busy four years. We've got a lot going on in Clarksville, and there's probably going to be some more stuff going on. We're going to be making improvements, and it's going to be an exciting four years for everybody. But thank you.
Next, we have Ward Ten, City Councilmember Stacey Creek.
Are you ready to take your oath of office?
Yes.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stacey Creek.
I, Stacey Creek.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all the laws.
And will obey all the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And of the State of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the City of Clarksville.
Of the City of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As a City Council Member.
As a City Council Member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Well, I'll keep this brief. I want to first start off by thanking my mom and my dad. They taught me by example how important it was to give back to your community and do for others. I'm so thankful that they did, and it's proved them, that it's inspired me in everything that I've done for the community, including in serving on the City Council. Also, I want to thank so many of you here in attendance tonight. There are many residents of Ward Ten. I thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve both Ward Ten and this great city of Clarksville. I'm born and raised here, and it is truly my honor to serve this city and do all that I can to help make it an even better place than it already is. There's also so many in this room that have given me advice, whether you live in Ward Ten or not. You've guided me, you've helped me in decisions that have needed to be made, and I know it's important to be able to do all the research that we can to find out what are the best decisions that we need to make to help keep this city moving forward. It's not only my honor to serve the public, it's also my honor to work with all of the city employees that we see here today, as well as those that can't be here. I'm so grateful to each of you. Many of the department heads, y'all are also people that I have reached out to to help get advice in our decisions that we have to make. So thank you for all you do every day for this city. And again, I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to continue serving in the four years. Thank you.
Next, we have Ward Eleven, City Councilmember Josie Keenan. Next, we have Ward Eleven, City Councilmember Joshua Keenan. Joshua, would you...
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joshua Keenan.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey all of the laws.
And will obey all of the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Clarksville.
Of the city of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And that I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As city council member.
As city council member.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon to all who are here. And I would just like to start off by saying I'm very grateful for this opportunity to serve this great city. And for us to ensure that each and every day, I will put my best foot forward to make sure that the warranty level is well represented, and this is the base of the city as a whole. I will give it my best, and I will not take my duties lightly. And I would like to thank my son and my daughter for being able to stand beside me today for this humble occasion. I would like to thank my special forces family, the oppressor band, for being here to support. Thank you for the years of mentorship. My first, my very first thing is our John Uous, who grew me when I was a youngest, six, 1990. And he's still with me today. And I'm so grateful for him and his support over the many years. I would like to thank my Vesanta family for being here to support me. And then all those of my circle, my small circle of friends, friendship, those who support me and those who definitely hold my foot to the fire. Those who call me all the time every week, asking me, hey, what are you working on? I mean, nothing. I appreciate that. Those who challenge me, make me do some research and learn more and more about the city, how it works. I appreciate that. And then all of the city departments, the leaders of each department. I truly appreciate you for your leadership and sacrifices you make and things that you do. Again, thank you all for this opportunity. May God bless America. May God bless this great state of Tennessee. And may God bless
Next, my side on our agenda for this special session is the election of the mayor of Ward Ten. It is my great honor to nominate Councilperson Juan Smith to serve as mayor of Ward Ten in this city. And I will receive a note. I'll entertain a second to that nomination. Properly seconded. Any member who wishes to be recognized. Seeing on the ready to vote. Madam clerk, please take a vote.
Mr. Zacharias?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Colonel?
Aye.
Mr. Red?
Aye.
Ms. Markey?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Of course.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Strickland?
Aye.
Mr. Keenan?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Pitts?
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Smith, you're no stranger to this. I have now pronounced you legally duly elected as our mayor president of the city of Clarksville. I think we've got an oath of office to you. If you both please come forward and sit down. Hey, another drill.
I, Stacey Creek.
Juan Smith.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And obey all of the laws.
And obey all of the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And of the state of Tennessee.
And that I will.
And that I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Support and obey.
Support and obey.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And all ordinances.
And all of the ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Clarksville.
Of the city of Clarksville.
And that I will demean myself.
And I will demean myself.
In my official capacity.
In my official capacity.
As mayor of Ward Ten.
As mayor of Ward Ten.
Faithfully.
Faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And with due regard.
And with due regard.
To the welfare of the city.
To the welfare of the city.
To the best of my ability.
Today, it is a great evening to be in the presence of my many supporters, friends, and family. I am grateful and humbled to be selected to serve this great city, Clarksville, once again, my last term. I want to thank God, of course, but alone, this El El Yon, the Most High. I want to thank Mayor Pitts, a man of great goodness. And I want to thank this white minister, Cindy Pitts, for both of their constant beliefs in faith in God and limited prayers for this city. And I appreciate the council. They bring forth great teamwork to make the vision of Clarksville a thriving reality. Many good things are being accomplished as I speak today, including the transportation 2020 plus plan, five-point million-dollar sidewalks, a quarter of homes, and more. This is a new year, a new day, and a new opportunity for us to continue to work to move Clarksville forward. And I believe that God knows of the plans that he has for Clarksville, plans to apostle the city and not to harm it, plans to give it hope and a great future. And I stand ready today to follow his lead and plans as I continue to be under the guidance and leadership of Mayor Pitts. I will continue my work to keep Clarksville the number one place to live, worship, work, and enjoy. May God bless America and may God bless Clarksville, Tennessee.
Following adjournment, I'm honored if you want to please stay. We have plenty of refreshments over here, so nobody leaves until the refreshments are gone. The purpose for which our special session in the Clarksville City Council having been accomplished, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Without objection, adjourn. Thank you very well.